Welcome to the Cedar Falls community, the whole meeting this July 16, 2018. I'd now like to call this meeting to order with a quick note for items number one and two, we're just switching levy update first, it should take 20 to 25 minutes there, then move on to item one, the review code, section of 14-149, and finish with the bills. At this time, I'd like to call up our C. Engineer John Ressler for an update on our levy.
Thank you Mayor Brown, members of the council. So, tonight I'm going to be giving an update on the levy and talking a little bit about budget as well. We have a couple of important topics tonight, so I'm going to just try to keep moving things along as quickly as possible, but yet, still taking enough time to cover everything we need. It's my understanding that the city administrator has briefed a lot of you kind of on this topic, so it shouldn't be, should be somewhat familiar to you, but we'll get started with that. So, talking about the progress on the levy project, and then also kind of giving an update on the budget status. And as I talk through this, I'm going to be referring to five different segments of the levy, and they're color-coded on this slide. The first segment is near the Ice House, the second segment is around the Broom Factory, kind of follows the railroad tracks and curves around to the trail opening. The third segment is also in the Broom Factory area, from the trail opening to the Main Street Bridge. Segment four is the area in Peter Melendez Park, and the final segment, segment five, is the longest segment, but truly covers kind of south of First Street and then all the way down to Western Homes. So, some different challenges with each segment that we'll get into, but first, we'll just give you everybody a little update on where those segments are at as far as the status. So, segment one, the levy wall is basically complete, there are a few minor items to take care of, seating, sodding, final grading, but for the most part, in segment one, that wall is complete, lighting modifications also have to be done. There is, with this project, we did some sanitary work for the Ice House, the line is in, the pump station is complete, there is still a water line that needs to be installed as part of that segment. Segment two, the Broom Factory, that wall is basically complete as well, the wall was extended to meet the 500-year flood elevation, and the counterforts were added, and that's simply basically a reinforced concrete section on the dry side of the levy that reinforces the wall to counteract the forces of the river, so that's been added as well, and that work is complete, and again, simple remaining work here, grading and seating, concrete staining, so that segment is basically complete as well. Segment three, that's a small segment, again, by the trail opening to the Main Street Bridge, there were some challenges with the footing in this location, but that work is nearing completion, with the footing being reinstalled and the wall being reinstalled as well. Again, you'll hear kind of this theme throughout, very similar things here as well, backfilling, grading, seating, lighting installation, trail installation, but this wall should be pretty much in place right now, I didn't go out and check today, but they were working on footing and getting that wall installed, so in the next week or so, I anticipate most of that work will be complete, other than some of that remaining work, that's what I would consider relatively minor. Segment four, Peter Melendez Park, this is a section that has changed considerably from the plans, the footing is determined that it is not adequate, so the footing, existing footing in the wall has to be completely torn out, and the levy wall and footing completely replaced. This will have a large impact on the Peter and Melendez Park area, as they dig that wall, footing out, the slopes have to be dug back, so we don't end up with any types of unstable slopes, and then the park would have to be restored, we are going to look for ways to try to mitigate the impact of the park. As we look at those, there are some things that might cost more or less, so we will be looking at all those things, trying to save dollars and minimize our impact to the park. So, there is significant work left in this area. Segment five, most of the earthen levy through here has been raised two feet, there is new concrete wall and footing installation is complete along the water reclamation facility, there is a small section of new concrete wall and footing near a railroad opening off of Grove Street, that work is progressing, that is not quite done, but it's progressing well. And then, there is additional wall height that will be added along the Western Homes section, that work has yet to be completed, and then there are, unsuitable materials have been removed from an inspection trench. It was known that there were potentially some issues in this area, so we wanted to look at materials in this trench, and they found some rubble, construction debris, some drywall, some plastic, so that material was removed and suitable levy material was put Segment five, getting a little more into the remaining work on segment five, install the two-foot section, two-foot extension on existing concrete near Ninth Street, I had mentioned that, backfilling the inspection trench, and install new earthen levy near Western Homes, there is a small section on the very end that will be new earthen levy, there was an inspection trench under that that has yet to be done, complete the installation of new concrete wall near the railroad opening, I mentioned that, that's almost done, modify the railroad opening to support an invisible wall, so shop drawings were reviewed, it's been in the plans, there is a railroad opening by Grove Street, there were some issues that were determined with that invisible wall support, so there were some changes there, that work has yet to be done, and then the installation of an arch pipe extension has to be completed as well. More what I would consider minor work, trail restoration and repair, the plaza and the recreational trail work has to be completed, Western Homes entrance and parking lot grading and paving, and then the other, some other items here you see on this list. So, that kind of gives you an update on these sections, segment one and two, basically complete, segment three, wrapping up, segment four, major work to be completed in that location yet, and segment five, really a long segment, the majority of that work is earthen levy, and raising that, that has been done, but there are small pieces of that that have yet to be completed, so we feel we're on progress, we don't feel we're behind, but there's still plenty of work to do, you know, we want the rain to stay away, and we hope to continue to make good progress. With that, I want to give you a little update on some of the project challenges and the impact that has had to our budget. So, I'm taking these by segment as well, so, first segment, we anticipate change orders in the neighborhood of $40,000 on the first segment. As I mentioned, we had some Ice House pump station design that wasn't anticipated, some additional water service work, and some electrical work that needed to be done, these photos kind of show that work, you see the Ice House sanitary pump station there, there was a footing issue, the pump station had to be kept outside and buried in the ground with a connection made due to the Ice House footing, and then some electrical work had to be done, where we installed some meters on that historic building, that's that gas station nearby. But overall, not too bad in segment one. Segment two, relatively minor change orders in the neighborhood of $7,000, there is some, there was an issue discovered with the survey datum, which basically tells you where you are on the earth, and it was determined that we needed to use a little bit different datum, so we had to increase the height of the levy a couple of inches, again, not significant, but we wanted to make sure we're meeting our flood elevation, so that additional concrete and steel ended up costing about $7,000. So you can see that work again is pretty much complete, and we've had the additional concrete in place on that segment. Segment three, the costs have gone up a little bit on this segment, because in order to complete this design, the consultant had to make an assumption on what the existing footing was on their segment three and segment four, and unfortunately, they made the wrong assumption, but they took the information they had and made the best judgment that they felt they could at that time, but it is not the correct existing footing, and that impacts the design, we were not able to reuse as much of the existing wall as we anticipated, so that cost has gone up in the neighborhood of $65,000. So, you see some of this work here, on the left, you see the lower wall, which is a retaining wall for the trail, and then you see the flood wall beyond that, and so initially, it was anticipated the footing there could be reused, and the vertical section of the wall would be tied into that, we weren't able to do that, we had to have a completely new footing as well, so that was part of the cost. On the right-hand side, you see the lower retaining wall for the trail, we had to have a little bit of a change order there to get that to tie in correctly with the footing of the flood wall. Segment four, this is really where we have the majority of our change order, and again, that's a result of the assumption on the existing footing. I will get into this a little bit here as well, so, the lower wall was installed, which is just a retaining wall, as we did that, there were some issues with the slope and the stability, and exposing the footing for the flood wall, that's when we really determined that the wrong footing was assumed, and we felt we needed to support that wall in place, or the wall could potentially slump, and there were some concerns for safety of the workers in holding that wall in place, so there is some expense there, as you can see, they have some steel bars and piling holding that wall in place, and they had that while they built that lower retaining wall, which you see on the right-hand side, so that certainly was a project challenge, and it added some costs. Unfortunately, it added some costs that may, maybe we didn't have to spend, because that wall needs to be completely torn out and replaced anyway, but at that time, we did not have that information. So this is really just showing, there's a lot of information here, the point here is just something simple, on the left-hand side, you had what we anticipated doing, we were cutting the wall off at ground level in segment four, and we were tying it to the existing concrete and extending it up. Well, we determined that that footing could not support that, so we have a more complex solution, which is a 10-foot wall and an 11-foot footing, so that's where the costs are coming from, you have a lot more excavation, you have a lot more concrete, you have a lot more steel. And then we have the impacts to the park itself, in order to dig this out and store the spoils, we really anticipate this is going to have a major impact to the park. Again, we're going to look at ways to mitigate this and try to reduce our costs, but we wanted to be conservative, and so we are assuming that the majority of this park will be impacted by the replacement of that segment four wall. This shows a couple of other minor issues, we had some grading tie-in to the First Street Bridge that we had a little bit of a change on, and then again, some, a similar issue with the lower retaining wall tie-in to the levy flood wall footing and wall, and making sure that that was designed and installed correctly, so there were some changes there that affected the cost of the project. Finally, there was some electrical work in segment four, there were some lines that weren't located correctly, so we have kind of a minor addition there to make some changes to the electrical in that area. So, segment four is really the major, major impact to change orders, unfortunately, it's just something we have to do because of the levy wall itself, it was deemed that it would not be adequate reusing that existing footing. And then, also to quickly summarize, we know approximately, we know about $100,000 worth of change orders at this time, we have hard numbers for that, the rest of these numbers we know are coming, we're trying to be conservative in our estimates, so we don't have to come back again and ask for more money, so we might be able to save money on the Peter Melendez Park, there may not be as big of an impact, that might bring this overall number down, but we wanted to be conservative in our numbers, we're using unit prices from the contract to estimate a lot of these changes, so again, we're trying to be conservative but reasonable, so that's where this overall number is coming from, but the $100,000 range is about where we're at right now with known costs. So, going into segment five, project challenges in segment five, additional structural concrete in one segment, we had a datum issue here as well, so that's where you see the concrete and steel, First Street Bridge grading, we had an issue where we're tying into the earthen levy into the First Street Bridge again, so that created some extra cost, we had this inspection trench, which was planned for, but at that point, we didn't know if we would find bad materials, so there is a way to pay for that in the plans, but we didn't know if we'd find anything or not, so that cost was not included. Railroad opening, invisible flood wall, we've kind of been over that, I'll get into some of these photos, the grading into the bridge we discussed, we have at the very end of the segment five wall by Western Homes, part of the inspection trench you can see, that's where some of the garbage and construction rubble was found, that has to be put back, and then an earthen levy added in that segment. The railroad opening that we talked about with the invisible wall that we had to modify to make sure that that was strong enough to hold the water back, on the right-hand side, you see some manholes that were required to be adjusted, that wasn't anticipated in the plans. On the left-hand side on this photo, you see where we have to add the two feet to the existing wall, and really, this here is to show that we have a concrete staining and painting issue where it wasn't addressed in every segment of the wall, so we want to match the wall that CFU has in place there. On the right-hand side, there is some grading, we're trying to keep out of some private property, but it is possible we may have to look at a grading and utility easement in that location, so that could add some costs as well. And this is really kind of a summary of all of the segments I've just talked about, so, first line is total grant funding, and that includes the grant that the Historical Society received for work at the Ice House. Then we have all of our expenses, we've got the design and acquisition costs, the construction administration cost, the bid for the project, and then we have that change order, so, construction change orders is a summation of all five segments, and that's coming to close to a little over $650,000. Again, that's what we anticipate, right now, we have about $100,000 of known costs, but we anticipate that number will increase to that range, hopefully it will come down, we've tried to be conservative, but again, reasonable at the same time. And there were some ineligible costs, and those were really some costs that were incurred prior to receiving the grant, and so that is subtracted out of our cost number, so we have funds available of about 6.7 million, we have eligible expenses of about 5.7 million, and our total grant funds that remain are close to $1 million. So, the good news is, there is money to pay for this in the grant, so it's not like the city has to go and find new monies for this, it is part of the grant money, the money is there, but unfortunately, there are additional costs, and we wanted to make you all aware of what those additional costs are, because they are significant, although it is funded. And so, with that, I kind of want to say that we are planning on moving forward with this, we really can't delay on these decisions, the city administrator has directed me to continue, because we don't want to affect the schedule of this project, these are things we really don't have a choice in doing for the integrity of the levy wall, we have to move forward, so that's how we are, that's how we're proceeding, there are no decisions that have to be made tonight, this is something that we just wanted to make you aware of, and as these change orders come in with hard numbers, we will be bringing these forth to council for your review, but as of right now, we are planning to move forward with these changes.
Thank you, John. Did it?
Any questions?
Any questions from council, comments? Mr. Wieland, excuse me.
Yes, the original foundation that was put in with the original flood wall, was that adequate for that design? I know it's not for this one.
Right.
But it was adequate for the original design?
Well, for the original design, talking to the consultant, it sounds like it may not have been, but the challenge in determining that is the, the design standards often change over time, so I don't know what the exact design standards were at the time that original levy was built, so it could very well have been adequate, but based on current design standards, and the additional loading we're putting on that wall by raising it, we've determined that that existing footing was not adequate, and we do, we did need a different, more beefed-up footing to hold that wall in place.
Thank you. Mr. Blanford?
Mr. Ressler, do you think we've accounted for all the design miscalculations now then?
I believe so, again, we've tried to be conservative, we tried to look closely at this, based on the progress of the levy and where it's at, it is significantly complete, but by no means complete, so there could be some other things that come up, we've taken a hard look and tried to anticipate what those things might be, so our hope is that we've accounted for everything, we feel good that we have, but there are things that come up, there were some things, unanticipated things that did come up in the construction of some of these segments, old foundations around the Broom Factory, that there was no way to know that those things were there, so that added some costs, but really, the most difficult segments, I feel are segments three and four. Three is about complete, and four is, hasn't been touched, but it's going to be completely reconstructed, so we don't anticipate really finding anything that we're not going to have already accounted for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got, yeah, go ahead Frank.
What do you anticipate the impact on Peter Melendez is going to look like?
Again, we're going to look at ways to try to mitigate this, but all of those things add expense, my gut feel is that keeping the material on site, that those spoils that we dig out and have to put back when the wall's in place, the cheapest thing is probably going to be to keep them in the park, which will take up a significant portion of that park, but we're going to look at some other things, do we do some shoring to try to reduce how much material has to be removed, are there ways to mitigate that, I've talked a little bit with Mark Riplinger as well, are there ways, things the city can do to try to save some money as far as removing some of that plant material and trying to save it and put it back, so I anticipate it'll have a significant impact, it's going to be difficult to keep that to a minimum, but we're not done looking at that issue.
There'll still be some form of park there when you're done?
Yes, when we're all done, we anticipate there'll still be some park there, and we're certainly aware of the sculpture in that area, so we would, we'll certainly be protecting that or removing that for safekeeping until the work is done.
I've got a question for you, so we understand that it has to get done, it's the flood levy, and maybe there's dollars in the pot there to pay for it, and you said something interesting that the contractor had the assumption of what was to take place, now there's a change order. So, when the company charges the city for those change orders, is that at a wholesale rate, John, or is that a retail rate? Because all the contracts I've ever dealt with, there's no assumptions, there is, here's what it's going to cost, and you get the bid for it, and now, when there's change orders, I get that, but it seems like, I hope they're not making extra money on the change order, it's typically at a wholesale rate.
Well, the change orders are typically, there's typically a markup on change orders, and in this case, it's the consulting firm designing it that made the wrong assumption on the footing, it's not the contractor, so the contractor would argue that he doesn't have any control over this, so typically, there is markup, of course, we review all change orders, and if things look really excessive, you know, we try to go back and renegotiate these things and negotiate the prices down as much as we can, but it is additional cost that they didn't anticipate, so typically, there is markup.
Very good. Yes, Mark?
I'm just wondering if we need, if we could communicate with, whether it's parks or with Community Main Street as well regarding any long-term plans that may be looked at for Peter Melendez Park down the road, that we can accommodate now, as this is put back together, if we can ask the question at least?
Absolutely, we will certainly look into that.
I share some disappointment regarding the footing, it's a three and a half million dollar project, and I don't know how we miss that, because it's not like that levy's 100 years old, but change orders happen, I get that, so.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Moving on to the next item is the review code, section 14-149, last week, this was referred by council, good respectful discussion, I wanted to bring it up sooner, just later with staff talking with them, because there could be potential hardships for those folks looking to come into compliance now, and then ultimately, how would the city enforce if we delayed bringing this forward, so I'm happy to open up discussion once council gets through, I am going to limit the discussion to three minutes, and we'll go from there and ask for Stephanie to give us a background on this referral towards the section of this code.
Thank you Mayor, good evening council members, I'll go through a variety of things here with introductory comments, and we're going back through this because inspections are occurring, we have been in about six months of this requirement coming due for various properties, so we wanted to be sure to circle back with this discussion as quickly as possible. A lot of what I'm going to present is going to be a little repetitive, I think, because there have been several discussions at the council level regarding the rental ordinance, and for a little bit of background first, the Single Family Home Conversion Task Force started meeting in January of 2014, and in that, they established in their first meeting what their mission would be, and to summarize that, it was regarding analyzing the scope and impact of conversion of single-family homes to rentals, specifically in the R1 and the R2 zoning districts, and then determining methods to control, moderate, and mitigate that negative impact of those certain types of properties. And so then, there was a, near the end of their discussion, there was a PowerPoint presentation to the council and the Planning and Zoning Commission, a joint presentation in November 2014, where I believe Dick McAllister presented the recommendations that came out of that about year discussion, then in January, on January 19th, 2015, the adoption process kicked off, and the rental ordinance was then adopted by February of 2015, and it was adopted with a council direction to have review, and we did that review by February 15th of 2016, and so I have some slides where I'll go over the conversation that we had at that time reviewing it. Each of those presentations included the section 14-149, that recommendation of having the driveways, parking areas, and parking lots being paved. So, my presentation will also then go over a letter that our city attorney wrote in 2015 that speaks to health, safety, and public welfare, as being one of the questions that was asked in the referral, and then I will finish with some status updates about implementation and number of properties impacted and that type of information. So, going back to January of 2015, this was the slide that was shown to council in discussing a variety of elements related to the ordinance that was being considered for adoption, and during the meeting process, whether it was particularly at this January meeting, or the three different hearings that we had, or whether it was at the pre-meeting in November that I talked about, there were a number of mentions about the paving requirement, and discussions about the challenges of gravel surfaces, how rentals are a commercial use, that the city's requirement for commercial uses for parking lots that had three or more vehicles had been in place for a long time, and those were the types of things that were talked about with this particular slide. The task force had discussions, and this goes back a little bit further, talking a little bit about the, some of the original ordinances, and originally what was in place about that, then some of you have heard this April 1970 ordinance, and what was in place going back that far for commercial lots, and there was a definition about what a parking space is, that also included that parking spaces, other than residential, shall be dust-free, and then the parking section of that ordinance talked about when it's commercial and has five vehicles, needs to be asphalt or concrete, needs to have a five-foot setback, has to have marked parking spaces, proper drainage, all those types of things, so that was a little bit of what was discussed at the task force's level. Now, as to the question of maybe why it's considered commercial, and why there were conversations back then about it being commercial, why staff brought that forward, why the task force thought about that, it was for several reasons. thought about that, it was for several reasons. A service is being provided in exchange for a fee. So that, that is kind of a, a commercial nature. The regulations for rental are in the city code via this rental code. And then also, it's likely that, and I won't say in every case, but likely that this type of enterprise that people may have are reporting it as income on tax returns or reporting it as a business on tax returns, but I can't say for certain for every case. So that is why the assertion about commercial business. And I know that there was a question about the city licensing and how that applies and when that applies, and so for clarification, the city has business licenses applicable to only a couple situations. There, we do not require that every business in the city have a license. So it applies to mobile merchants, pawnbrokers, sidewalk cafes, taxis, and tree trimmers. Outside of that, the rental code regulates rental, and then outside of that, there's no additional licensing by the city for commercial businesses. Now, moving ahead to then February 15th, 2016, there were several more slides in that review where we talked about paving requirements. And some may recall this slide where we were able to provide some information about kind of the scope of what's going on, and this was because in adopting the rental ordinance, we required in the first six months that we have properties give us information, if you recall that, where we, we had single-family and duplex types homes, they had to give us a lot of information. And we were collecting, what's your surface? Is it gravel, or is it paved? That type of thing. So that's where we came to this number and the total number of rentals that we had at that time. We also then talked about some of the issues related to gravel, again covering the reasons why, talking about how gravel lots, where you have three spaces, well, we have a requirement that when there are three or more spaces, it needs to be paved. Talking about rentals being a commercial enterprise as to why we would apply this requirement. That rentals tend to have a higher and continual level of use for years and therefore more wear and tear, and so that wear and tear can be a lot more pronounced. We also observed that gravel sprawls and it's easily added to, and so driveways could be manipulated into parking areas or lots possibly. They could also encroach into required setbacks, and so therefore, a clear delineation avoids some of those issues. We also showed this slide in February of 2016 that continued on about gravel can wash away, or it can be cleared away with snow removal efforts. Those are some impacts that then, then it can make it in, in its, into our storm sewers and into our streams. Doesn't happen 100% of the time, but this certainly is a recognition that that, that could be possible. And so that's one aspect that impacts health and safety, and that we wanted to be cognizant of avoiding applications that would lead to negative impacts, like blocking our storm sewers or leading to flooding. And so in conversation, we also talked a little bit about how we've recognized that we continue to be regulated by the Clean Water Act and the EPA with that, with the Dry Run Creek being an impaired waterway. Those were the types of conversations that we had and how sediment can contribute to that. Additional note that I have up on the slide that was not there in February of 16 was that we have lately, you know, Cedar Falls was featured in an article related to permeable alleys, and we have shared information with the council about estimations on pollutant reductions related to implementing permeable alleys. And we have eight permeable alleys in place right now, and we are working to improve the alleys throughout the city. We also talked in February of 16 about how new homes, no matter rental or owner occupied, that we did change our zoning ordinance so that any new home must have a paved, a paved surface that gravel's no longer permitted. And also talked about how the rental code allowed a three-to-six-year implementation of this requirement. And we did go a little bit deeper into some situations, because again, at that time, staff said to council, this is one of the areas where we have had concerns. We have had people expressing the concern about the hardship with this, the expense, the impact of this, how does this go? And so we took a look at maybe a typical block where, where we might see the, the impact happen. And so we put in red hatching here, the, what we could tell from aerials about existing gravel area, and then the yellow lines are what's allowed by ordinance in terms of parking that could be there. And so this showed a block that had a lot of properties that already had more than three spaces for the most part in gravel, and to that point of the trigger for paving. And then we zoomed in a little bit more on one particular property there, and I'll zoom in on that. And again, the red, the red hatching is the extent of gravel to the best that we could determine, and then the yellow is outlining what would be allowed by code. And so when we had a concern about area being lost for parking, that is a possibility, but I guess what we talked about in 2016 was, for example, the vehicle right below the seven stalls text on this slide is parked back further, and presumably, that may be because if they parked forward, somebody might park them in. And we also don't see any other commercial lots functioning like this. There's a common access drive. Otherwise, we, we have parking areas and area of gravel that really don't work well. They're not efficient, they're not maybe an appropriate parking setup.
Can I ask you a quick question? Are you saying that where it's in red is where they've added gravel where they should not have?
I don't know that I necessarily go that far. I'm just saying at this point, that's what we observed for gravel out there. Wasn't able to make a determination about whether it should've or should, should not have been. I said that if there are three or more spaces, our ordinance has required paving.
But can I comment quick? That area of town, those homes go back to the 1800s. So that could've and would've predated the first introduction of a parking requirement surface in 1970.
That goes back to really then documentation of when the gravel was in, did it get spread or not, or, it's very difficult to say for sure. But part of talking about this here was talking about, does the parking really even function as to whether it's appropriate to have it set up this way? It doesn't really do anybody any good to have parking lot that doesn't function well. And it was also to the point of wanting to be sure that we conveyed that, don't operate under the assumption that all of the gravel has to be paved. It may be that some of it should be removed, and in this case, if you were to remove it, you gain some open space. So you gain a balance between the concern of additional stormwater runoff on a hard surface versus gravel, because you've got open spa, you've, you've removed some of that, and, and that can be kind of a holding area by being green space. So there were some multiple reasons to discuss this example.
But this is showing that this place with seven units should have seven stalls?
Under our ordinance right now, and it's been in place for a while, the require, and I, I'm not gonna quote a date, if that was 1970 or, or 93, our ordinance has revised a couple times, but two parking spaces per unit had long time been the requirement.
So we don't know if that's seven bedrooms or seven, two-bedroom units, or what that would be?
The example here was not to get into, do they have the legal amount or not? It was really to talk about the paving part of it and how that could be done.
Okay, I understand that, but when you start to control how much parking, you then backfeed into how many bedrooms or people are allowed to rent that property. And you could be taking away usable bedrooms that have functioned for decades adequately. And in the Cedar Falls code, we allow stacked parking. So you could stack the cars there, and that's an acceptable way to park. Am I not correct?
We don't allow stacked parking in a commercial setting. We allow it in a driveway setting.
I understand that, but there's a dispute on whether this is residential or commercial, and I'll, we'll talk about that coming up here.
And when we talked about this, I also recall talking with council about, the point here is not to reduce the ability for occupancy level, it's about getting the, the parking that is there meeting, meeting our ordinance. So in February of 2016 with this review, staff concluded with a recommendation to maintain that hard surface requirement of Section 14-149 as it was written, and council affirmed that. So getting into public health, safety, and general welfare purposes, this is where I'm using elements from the city attorney letter that was provided as a part of your packet, and I will go over that. The city has the authority to regulate for public health, safety, and welfare, and this ordinance was adopted in compliance with that authority. I'll cover these six points that the city attorney made, and also wanted to note that in his letter, it talks about how if these elements are not met, we are able to discontinue uses that would materially affect that. And so rental permits, having their renewal every three years, at the renewal, they must meet the ordinance in effect at the time. So that's why the three, the three-year cycle kind of comes into play, and when we talk about this three to six years to implement. So very briefly, the first point being that hard surface driveways and parking and associated tension can reduce erosion and downstream flooding. I think the example from the slideshow in February of 16 shows that. Non-improved surfaces can generate sediment and oil-based pollutants that can flow into our streams and can contribute to pollution and impaired water quality. We've talked about that a little bit already. Slowing the rate of surface runoff into streams reduces flooding and flash flooding. This is a safety concern that we have in the university branch of the Dry Run Creek, where we have seen flash flooding, and in fact, this, we saw some in the, in the past month. Point four, about impacts to the neighborhood's welfare and safety when excessive parking is on the street, becomes maybe a traffic safety issue, accessibility of emergency vehicles, and that having appropriate off-street parking that's set up to be able to accommodate that, whether it be in, in how it's structured or the quantity, those are two different elements. It, it needs to function appropriately so that it is used. That unclearly defined parking in driveways lead to expansion of gravel areas, and then parking beyond allowed limits can lead to grass being used and that, getting compacted and that type of thing. And so then erosion, stream sedimentation, and flooding continue as concerns. And then the final point was that rentals generate more vehicles per unit for prolonged, prolonged times, and thus more wear and tear. And so again, then the aforementioned issues are exacerbated. Now, there may be a policy decision here about the appropriate part of the code to regulate this health, safety, and welfare issue. So staff discussed with the task force and council the difficulty of enforcing. I mean, we had multiple conversations about that type of topic. Were there any other ways we could do this, and, and how might we approach this best? And so the gravel issue was of particular concern with rentals, especially in the R1 and the R2 neighborhoods, as we recognize the reason that the task force got together and the mission that I covered there, and that's in your packet. And so that would be what, what I put forward is the, what I recollect is the policy decision decided to put that in the rental code so that we would be targeted on just the issue that was being raised and of concern. So now getting into some data, this is data that we were still working on when, when I had the packet, had to go out. So this, this is a new slide, but I know that some council members do like to have some data. So here, we tried to break down the various categories of the types of rentals that we have. We have the single family, you know, the one unit, the traditional home in the neighborhood that's been converted to a rental. We have the two-family, whether it was a single family that was made into a duplex, converted at some time, whether it's actually a duplex, that's the two-family. Then we have the multifamily, three units and above, maybe an apartment-style type of living. And then miscellaneous captures some of the other situations where we maybe have one or two units above a commercial building or some, or the mobile home type of situation. That's what miscellaneous is looking to capture. And so we see here that we have a total of 1,925 rental properties. And this table is simplified, so some of the, the math of gravel to paved won't add up, because we, do we have some nuances of some that don't have parking, some that have mixed surfaces, so I'm trying to keep it simple in a table like this, because I think really the question is, how many situations of gravel do we have in a single-family home, in a duplex, and whatnot? So that's really what I'm trying to capture here in showing this type of information. So in total, we have about 378, almost 400 properties that have gravel that we, that would be addressed here over the next three years. Well, that, that is start, that trigger has started as of February 2018, being three years after the ordinance was adopted, and now would be in effect for the next three years, will be working with property owners that might have gravel.
Stephanie, is that in our packet?
No, I said it, it was not. It was data we were still working on.
Got it.
So I apologize. But I can certainly provide that to you.
Thank you.
So I briefly went over this at the last council meeting in terms of talking about kind of our, our status and what I call compliance rate at this point. We're about 80% compliance, and that's for the period of, like I said, everything started here to become, the ordinance kind of took effect, I guess, in terms of needing to have that change from gravel to paved here in February of 18, being the three-year mark from adopting the ordinance. So from February to July 2018, we have about 80% of the properties in compliance, and that captures people that already had it paved, because you saw that statistics from the February 2016 slide, where we had a fairly large percentage of people that already have paved surfaces. And so, and this then also covers anybody who may have done the hard surfacing already, anticipating this, you know, wanting to comply with the regulation that's in place. We then have a little bit under 20% where we have plans in place, or we're working with the property owner, maybe they had questions, and so we answered those, and they're trying to get quotes, and we're kind of working with them. And so we've had some kind of level of communication. And then we have a very small percentage where we have had, not had any communication, and those start to be the concern where there, there might be further enforcement occurring. So I also did cover last week a little bit of the city's outreach of what we've tried to do in order to make sure that people are aware of this, that they are aware of their options, and we can talk through that. And so right away after the ordinance was adopted in February 2015, our rental inspector then notified any inspections that he had after that, and, and that has continued, has told them that any gravel would need to be paved or replaced with a paved surface, and that was put in writing in the rental records, and the property owner signed that. So they were notified directly three years before the requirement took place. Then we've had several current articles, and we can certainly continue that. We have done a postcard reminder to property owners one year in advance to all property owners that are coming up. So those that are due next August, they'll be getting their mailing very soon on this requirement. Just, we want to be sure that people are aware of it, that they're maybe working with a contractor, because we're sure that the contractors are busy as well. And then one month prior to the rental inspection, we are sending a letter. At, by this point, we have gone out and done just a drive-by inspection of all the properties due in the coming month, and those that are gravel, we are sending a letter, hey, we haven't heard from you, why don't you come in? Let's discuss a plan. Let's start talking about compliance, because you're gonna have a rental inspector come to your property in a month, and we don't want it to be a surprise that you may not have your rental permit in place after that. So that, that is what we're doing. So in terms of that enforcement, we really are trying to give every opportunity for landowner to complete this and to correct any issues. We are approaching it like we do with all code enforcement, where we're seeking a plan for compliance by a deadline or by putting forth a reasonable deadline. A reasonable timeframe would not be, I'll have it done 10 years from now. It would be, you know, it might take me a year or two or that type of thing. And it's gonna depend on the scope of what needs to happen as to how we feel about that being reasonable. We are offering to, to meet with owners and talk with them. We just met with some owners on Friday afternoon, and our planners have been available and met with multiple people about not assuming that you have to pave everything that's there, what are different options that you can do, those types of things. And we even had created a pamphlet for people to take with them. We did that right after we adopted the ordinance. And then we have not revoked any rental permits at this time. I indicated that there's about 20% that we are working with, and we have some that we haven't heard from, so those might be ones that we will be getting to at some point soon. But we're continuing to try to communicate with people to be sure the property owners know about it, and try to get a plan to us so that we can take care of this and, and move on. So with that, staff's recommendation continues to be that that Section 14-149 remain as written for the reasons covered in the presentation.
Thank you, Stephanie. I'll open it up to council. Any comments initially, or questions potentially for Stephanie at this point?
Do you want a recommendation to open up discussion?
It'd be fine.
I would recommend Section 14-149 remain as written and presented by staff. Second?
The motion, second. Thank you. I'll open it up for now for discussion. I'll open it up for now for discussion. Mr. Burr?
So basically, Stephanie, then we had about 378 properties left to go or that, that needed to be paved? You said they're about 80% done.
So far, out of the properties in the February to July timeframe, we've, we've had, of those coming due, 80% compliance. But that includes people that have already done, that had, had paving in place. So right now, we're working, we're probably, probably, let me back up to the data slide. Out of this slide, hold on here. Out of this slide, if you total the gravels, we're just under 400. And then the next slide where I talked about compliance, so, so far, about 88 of the properties have, 88 of that 400 have complied or are working with us with plans.
Looks like there's about 2,000 properties there, including miscellaneous.
Yep, just a little under 2,000.
I will open up to the public before council deliberates. Anyone here like to speak on the topic tonight at hand? Yes, ma'am, please come up. Just state your name and address in the mic and begin the three minutes, please uphold to that. Thank you.
My name is Sarah Kiani, and I'm a landlord here in Cedar Falls. I own three properties. I have some concerns about some of the data and information that was presented. The homes that I own are older homes, and so they should be grandfathered in under the existing ordinances. And the, the issue of street parking being not allowed at all, I think, I was going to bring that up at the end, but I think I need to bring it up now because the way I understand it is not a single spot of street parking is considered when we're looking at the parking spaces. So that would, that would in essence create more wear and tear on any parking surface. And when we're talking about single-family homes, we're talking about properties that have, the Cedar Falls was designed very well to allow for adequate street parking for one or two vehicles per home. Now, if it's a corner home, it has sufficient four spots. So when one of my homes particularly is in a position where there are four street parking spots, but none of those are considered, then, you know, decreasing the amount of occupancy for a family that would live there or, or unrelated individuals. So that, that is not separate conversation, I don't think, because I think we need to visit that umbrella of parking allowances with that. Let me just see what my other points were. If the financial, I mean, if the environmental concerns are to be recognized as valid, then the city would really need to consider paving all the alleys, because we can't separate those issues. My one driveway is facing a gravel alley, and if my gravel is to get into the watershed, then so is the alley's gravel. So I don't think that we can separate that as well. And if this is legitimately an environmental concern, then we need to look at all the homes in Cedar Falls, not just landlord-owned homes, which makes it feel a bit discriminatory. And also, I, I do believe it does create financial hardship for the landlords that are small, like me. I don't own several properties. I don't have a lot of income from my properties. There's vacancy rates that, again, can't be separated from the parking issue when you limit occupancy. So when I look at needing to have $5,000 to pave, it limits my landscape budget and my curb appeal. And, you know, when we're talking about aesthetics and wanting rentals to blend into the neighborhood, I think we need to consider that conversation as well. I think that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Was there someone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Kathy Kramer. I'm from 2516 Walnut. Bear with me, because I had no intention of speaking, but I'd like to kind of speak to what Stephanie talked about when she specifically chose the block between Walnut and Olive. I have a home that butts up to that alley. Right now, there's 13 properties that need to be paved. That alley is at an angle, and there are always really deep ruts in that alley as it is right now because of the water runoff. We were told, as we were down meeting with the code enforcement person when we were looking at our situation, that the infrastructure there does not support the water runoff because there is no storm sewer. So all of the water from those 13 properties that you have identified in that one block is all going to travel south, and it's going to probably end up on University Avenue, because that's the nearest storm sewer. The alley issue also, we've talked about, I watched a city council meeting not too long ago that discussed the paving with the block. That's all great in theory, but if we're doing one to two per year, and the life expectancy is 20 years, you'll never have 150 alleys paved. So what's the difference between the alley gravel and the gravel in a parking lot? I think this should all be looked at on a case-by-case basis, because I know what my parking looks like, and I think we do a good job of taking care of it. We don't have that sprawl. We are contained into one place. And back to the paving. Right now, with the 20-year thought of life expectancy, I walk to work every day, and there's grass and weeds growing up between the pavers and the alleys. So I can't think that you're going to get to 20 years when they're in that kind of condition. I think that holding landlords to this standard alone is unfair. You know, you've got a, a lot of people in this town with gravel. You've got owner-occupied homes. I see a lot of problems with gravel runoff from those houses. So I'm not sure how you can designate rental versus owner-occupied versus city-owned. It's all the same. And when it comes to health, safety, welfare, protection of life and limb, I don't see how this code can be enforced, because it really doesn't meet what the city rental standards are. What you're asking us to do, and this is a personal nature, you're asking us to pave three lots this year. We have to come up with probably around $60,000, $70,000. I don't know if anybody could ask you to do that. Could you come up with $60,000 or $70,000 to pave three lots when there's never been an issue? We've never had a nuisance issue. We try to take the best care of our property that we can if we're not fully occupied and if people, well, I guess most, some people don't think they need to pay their rent. So I don't know where the extra money comes from. Right now, we're paying astronomical property taxes, and I don't see that we're having the city work for us. I think the city is working against us. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Mayor and City Council, we own one single-dwelling property, like a five-room bungalow at 1931 Bell Avenue. The driveway is 202 feet long. The estimate there to pave that properly is 30 yards of cement for approximately $21,000, just for, just for the cement, not including any grading or other things like that. We have owned that property for 49 years. We bought it a long time ago. We've maintained it all this time. It's been re-roofed at least twice. Everything has been brought up to code, the electrical and all that. We are finding this amount of money a hardship on retirement time, which I have retired. And we think it's not, we think it's something that needs to be reevaluated. And hopefully, you folks will take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Hang on one second, sorry.
Mark Miller, 2929 Waterbury Drive, Cedar Falls. And longtime resident of Cedar Falls, lifetime resident of Cedar Falls. And it's been a while since we've been down for a committee of the whole meeting or a city council. So, you know, why are we here tonight? And that is because we put a lot of time and effort into the writing of this ordinance. We were not part of the committee that met for over a year. I know some of the discussion was, was the public informed? Did they know what was going on? The committee was, was composed of city staff, realtors, landlords, the public, you and I. There are many articles written concerning this ordinance being adopted by the city council. So I think there is a lot of opportunities for city, for the citizens to be involved in this process and to be informed as to what was going on. We do think it'll be a step backward to open up this ordinance, which would lead to maybe other additional changes made in that ordinance. But there's just a lot of work done, and I think it was a pretty fair, across-the-board compromise to work with everyone to try to come up with a plan that would improve what we have as a, a great city. So I know through some of that compromise or discussion, the, the driveways on rental properties in R1, R2 do not typically have to be paved, but they have to be solid surface. So there are other options besides just hiring a contractor and coming in and paving your, your driveway with concrete. You can do pavers. You can do open brick that, you know, grass can grow up through and be part of your, your driveway process. The other aspect of this is it's a, the rental properties are inspected every three years, and then they have, so that after an inspection is done, they have three years to comply. So if you're at the tail end of that process, you're basically looking at six years to budget money for this additional work on your, on your property. And there are provisions for someone with a unique situation to come into city staff and try to resolve how can they best meet this ordinance and be in compliance and not, not lose their rental permit. There's been also discussion on whether maybe this should apply to all properties in Cedar Falls. All properties should have a concrete driveway. And that discussion goes back to is, if you own rental property, are you in business or are you just a residential, you know, entity? And, and if I put a porch on my house or remodel my kitchen on my house, that's an improvement I make on my properties, that when I sell my property, I maybe I can gain from that. But I cannot earn income from that, nor can I deduct that or depreciate that off of my income taxes. But when you own rental property and you make an improvement or you buy that rental property or any commercial property, you can depreciate that property and those expenses and note of improvements over the lifespan of the life of whatever you, you improve. So it really is a business when you're in a rental business, and that's, this applies to that aspect of it being a business. So thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Gentleman over here, you bet.
Name is Craig Kramer. I live on 2516 Walnut in Cedar Falls, mayor, council. I have been dealing with this. I've lost a lot of sleep over this. I have talked to everybody I could talk to about this issue because I feel we have been singled out. It is vastly unfair. And my biggest gripe with this whole thing to start with was we know that the city has our information on file. We know they do because we get it all the time in letters and emails, rental permits, whatever. We know they have our information. So my biggest gripe to start with is why weren't we notified? Four years ago, when this discussion started with a courtesy email or a letter saying, hey, this is what we're looking at doing, rental code changes, occupancy changes, paving the parking lots, whatever, you lumped it all into one great big package. Why you did that, I, I don't know, but that's what happened. But what didn't happen was notification, okay? And I've talked to a lot of landlords, and some of them are here today. Nobody ever got an email or a letter, or better yet, for your benefit, would have been a certified letter in the mail saying, listen, here's what's going on. This concerns your business, as we, I guess, lumped into commercial now too. You should come down to the city council and talk to your council people and the mayor and see what's going on, because this pertains to you. Because I'll guarantee you, if this happened downtown, every one of those business owners would have received notification. And you know that. Secondly, I still have not heard any viable reason for the gravel being hazardous. As my wife pointed out earlier, and I'll point out again, we've had no problems, we've had no citations, we've had no issues, and we thought the issue was taken care of years ago with my particular property when we paved College Street, and they came to us and said, please pave your entrances to the driveways. We pay for the concrete, we'll furnish the labor, the city said, and it's taken care of. So we did, and it's still that way, okay? We don't have any gravel running out in the streets. If there's an instance where that is, then it should have been addressed individually. My other problem I have is with what Stephanie just said about it was unreasonable to expect 10 years out to pave, to pave. Well, when I was down to the city visiting with them about this very issue, they told me, and I quote, "We do not have any plans in the next 10 years to pave the alley between Searley and 26th and Olive and Walnut," the very alley that Stephanie just put on the TV. And that really frustrates me, because not only is this a huge expense for me, because by the time I'm done, it's going to exceed $80,000. And that's for asphalt. We're not even talking concrete. And yet, it's okay for the house next to me to have gravel. That's fine. I know, because there's a private residence right next to me that has gravel, but I'm going to have to pave. Runoff is runoff. And if you pave that hill up there in that alley, I know, I grew up in Cedar Falls, I've been there my whole life, and you're going to have a big, big mess, not only with runoff, but cars in the street if you shrink your parking areas. I guess I'm out of time. I'm sorry, but I also want to conclude with, and close with, I still think that this should be grandfathered in. If we have gravel and it's been there, as our lots have been there since the 1960s, we should be grandfathered in. So I would hope that this council would consider that, not just on the fact of consequences or anything else, but the fact that your alleys aren't paved, but you're making us pave our driveways, because it makes you guys look like a bunch of hypocrites.
Thank you, Craig.
Thank you.
Anyone further? I'll close the public discussion, open it back up to council. Comments or questions? Mr. Green?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to start saying that in my last, or in the last meeting we had, I had noted that I, I didn't have information to say that we had had extensive discussion on this topic. And I found out through the, the council packet from this week that that discussion did occur in February 2016. So that concern, I, I don't have of whether or not this was deliberated by council. I apologize if that came across as council didn't do their work or it wasn't thorough. I just didn't have that information. And part of the reason why I wanted to bring it up was because I didn't want to have staff invest time on something that might be just my question, because I knew it was going to take a significant amount of time and there'd be a lot of questions for it. So if it had been shot down last week and voted down, then the issue would have been resolved. So I'm, I'm thankful for the opportunity that we do have tonight to discuss it a bit. I've, I've got a lot of documentation. I wouldn't be able to get through it with us at almost seven o'clock. But I would like to just focus on the aspect of Stee, or Attorney Moore's letter, and Director Sheets had brought that up. My, my biggest concern with the fairness or the applicability of this is, is what several of the speakers have brought up, that, as Attorney Moore had mentioned, that hard surface driveways and parking areas and associated detention of stormwater reduce, it's meant to reduce, reduce erosion and downstream flooding, and that sediments and other, other aspects. And as I look at these items, I don't dispute that. I don't dispute that there's an environmental, a potential environmental issue that we need to deal with. But as was said, if we have this issue, we should be addressing that as a community and not targeting specific kinds of properties. It says, or Attorney Moore had said that with the EPA and with DNR, it says, "EPA and DNR can mandate expensive corrections on a very short timetable placed in the city and its taxpayers in adverse financial straits." So why wouldn't we address that through either nuisance ordinances or other ordinances to deal with that specific problem? I was thinking, looking through the council notes of why I might think differently on this, and it, it kind of ties back this idea when I was a Coast Guard officer, we were instructed to use the minimum force necessary to compel compliance. And my sense with this code is, is we, we do have, have issues, or especially had issues. And my sense with this code is, is we do have, have issues, or especially had issues when it was enacted, with, with code and, and quality of properties. And I, I feel like this addresses that with a hatchet when we should be using a scalpel. So got a couple more items, but I'll yield.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Anyone further? Mr. Cruz?
I'm assuming we're at 12:00.
Yes, as a matter of fact, I'll probably wait till you're done with your comments and just let folks know that the committee's going along. We're fine.
I want to address a comment. When Stephanie was speaking, I brought, she brought up the commercial versus residential. The federal tax code and the state tax code specifically state and classify rental property as residential. I said this before at the previous meeting. Residential dwelling units are depreciated over 27 and 1/2 years. Commercial are 38 years. Commercial enterprises are the process of selling goods and services and the rental contracts are typically square footage-based, where residential dwelling units are rented by bedroom, that sort of thing. Cedar Falls rental code references 562A that a landlord has to provide a compliant lease. Based on 562A, and for those of you who don't understand 562A, it's the lingo, short lingo that we use for Iowa Uniform Residential Landlord Tenant Law. It's the code of the state of Iowa. So Cedar Falls cannot just arbitrarily say, okay, rentals are commercial. They are specifically defined in the federal and state code and they're referenced in Cedar Falls code as residential dwelling units. That cannot be changed by somebody speaking in front of council here. I could elaborate on, it was, Danny, if you want to put up Slide 6 for me, please? Right here, we got the gravel displayed. Does anybody know where that gravel came from? Did it come from a homeowner, a rental, a business? Fall off a truck? Because anybody that's worked construction knows that fresh gravel is really yellow and that looks like that fell off of a truck. We have no source for that gravel. We don't even know if that's in Cedar Falls, technically. After this ordinance was discussed back 2015, I went through College Hill neighborhood and I took photos of all the storm sewer intakes. And not a single one, I think I got about a dozen of them, not a single one showed gravel to imply that the, and this was in February or thereabouts, that snow plowing dislodges gravel to any great extent like this displays here. This is obviously from a construction site or it just literally fell off a truck.
So are you suggesting that our city staff just took a picture to make a point as opposed to an actual area of, that's kind of what you're saying?
I don't know. I'm looking at this. There's a lot of questions you could ask, and I've had people point that out to me. So I'm just...
Let's allow the speaker to speak through and then we can bring her comments or questions thereafter.
I'm just, I'm just pointing out facts here because that's yellow gravel, that's, at any rate. Now, Danny, can you pull up Slide 9, please? Here we have the components of the public health, safety, and welfare. Number one item, hard-surface driveways and parking and associated detention can reduce land and downstream flooding. Hard-surface driveways by definition will increase runoff and flooding. In the Cedar Falls code, 2987, stormwater detention, there are exemptions for single-family homes and duplexes. So there is no detention on a single-family home in Cedar Falls as required. So here you have a statement that on the surface might look okay, but the detention is not required for single-family homes and duplexes. Item number two, you have non-improved surfaces will generate sediment. That's if the grade is poor and maybe in the right-of-way approach to a driveway. But oil-based pollutants, in other words, items off of a vehicle, oil dripping, antifreeze, brake fluid, brake dust, hydrocarbons, they'll settle into the soil and they'll be filtered naturally by the substrate. If you have hard-surface driveways, all these sediments and everything will go into the stream like they talk about here and have an impard waterway. Something that I think the city of Cedar Falls had, it's called rainscaping, landscapes for clean water. And they have a diagram here. And this is something I wanted to get on the overhead, but I didn't have a chance. Shows runoff from driveways going into the storm sewer and then eventually eroding into a stream. So there is a problem with, with that. Number three, you're saying slowing the rate of surface runoff, a hard-surface driveway and parking lot doesn't slow the surface runoff. It increases it, and that presents more flash flooding. So gravel, especially something like two-inch washed aggregate or various other types of surfaces could be used, like people have mentioned. But existing gravel has been effective for decades, if not hundreds of years. Slide 10, Danny? Thank you. Number four, we have the impacts of the neighbors' welfare and safety with excessive street parking. In all of this discussion of the rental properties, particularly around the College Hill, nobody's ever addressed the commuters coming in and filling up the street full of cars. So to say that having paved parking off-street then improves the safety for the safety vehicles and emergency vehicles, that's an inappropriate sentence. Then jumping to number six, rentals generate more vehicles per unit for prolonged times. That is categorically false. I pointed out back then and now, the U.S. Census shows more vehicles per household in owner-occupied homes than rentals. Many of the rentals, particularly around the College Hill and the parcade area, they drive, they park, they walk to school, they walk to their jobs at campus, they walk to their jobs at the parcade. So the vehicles move less in rentals. I have some that move, they, they sit there, don't move, and sit in parking lots, my parking lots, and they get low tires, and I know they're not moving. So there's, that, that statement is totally false. So I mentioned previously at the last meeting that the March 9, 1970 code spells out the first reference to parking space. And it states, "Parking spaces for other than residential use shall be dust-free surfaces." I wonder how many business owners in town are getting a postcard that have been established after 1970 to say that they have to have their parking dust-free? The gentleman there spoke about the discriminatory nature of just picking on the rentals. We have a code, non-conforming use, 29-112, continuation of existing uses, that is being ignored by using a definition that this is a commercial enterprise, and it's certainly not. You can't trump federal code, like I said earlier. So, let's see. Another component that I thought was kind of interesting here, storm, stormwater management program from 2014, I happen to have this copy. And the engineers can confirm this. They talk about the first one and 1/4 inch of rainfall, they call it the first flush. And this is the part of the rainfall that washes off the dirt, oil, grease, and trash from parking lots, streets, driveways, and other paved surfaces. This polluted runoff is harmful to our streams, rivers, and lakes. If you pave all of the parking areas, there's no chance for these light rains, the first inch and 1/4, to wash the impurities into the soil and be naturally filtered away. So I just can't see how we can justify, in particular, the legal non-conforming situations where most of these are, to lose their grandfathered rights in layman terms. I, I see it as a unreimbursed taking of property rights.
Thank you, Mr. Cruz. And just to let folks know who tuned in expecting regular city council, the committee of the whole is going long. We'll probably wrap up, I don't know when, but it's going long. That's why we're sort of in the middle of what typically takes place. Anything further from council?
Mr. Ray, I'd like to open it up for other side, but I have a few comments after.
If, nothing else further? Go ahead.
Two big parts that I, I think really stand out for me on this, that, that I, I can't talk to the, the deep environmental components and, and those sorts of aspects of this. I think in terms of fire extinguishers and, and the character of the neighborhood. And by that, I mean, with the character of the neighborhood, I live in downtown Cedar Falls. And there are properties around us that have gravel driveways. Some are almost overgrown, some are very well-maintained. We moved into that neighborhood, and I didn't really consider that as a major issue for why I would want to live in that neighborhood or not. I, I didn't even think about it. I, I tend to think of myself as a reasonable person. And while there are other things we looked at, like as we were sort of scoping out the neighborhood, that just wasn't a consideration. And I think of issues with, that I completely agree with, with the rental code, of how there's a, a lack, you know, issues with windows and lawns, weeds, things like that. Absolutely, I believe that, that we should hold all of our residents up to a certain standard. But when it comes to the, the gravel, I moved into that neighborhood knowing it was like that. It's not as if it's, it was paved and it deteriorated and now it's gravel. There was no reduction at all. I moved into that neighborhood knowing that that's what it looked like. So what's happening then is if I were to try to enforce my will as a resident on, on somebody, my next-door neighbor who has rental property, if I were to enforce my will on them and say, you have to have a gravel driveway because I believe that that's necessary, I just don't feel like that is, is an appropriate, it's an inappropriate thing that I can do and we shouldn't be doing collectively as residents against one particular kind of property. So character of the neighborhood, I don't believe is diminished at all by having gravel or by having non-paved because it was always that way. There's no diminishment. The second part is, is the idea of smoke detectors. And within the, the information that Attorney Moore had provided, he, he listed specifically about how smoke detectors were one example of how rental properties are required to conform to certain safety aspects for, for the health and safety of their residents. I completely agree. But the difference between gravel as a safety consideration and, and smoke detectors is that in my owner-occupied house, I'm also required to have smoke detectors. So it's even across the board and it's applied to everyone. So shared safety, shared cost, I, I think is perfectly acceptable. And I wouldn't be asking this question if we had a mandate that all residences hardscape. I'll just throw in a third thing about the question for enforcing rules that already existed. And I know Director Sheets had mentioned in a couple of presentations about how requirements to pave have either always been in place or they're, they're there and they haven't been enforced. And so that's, as I understand it, that's part of why we're setting this, this sort of extra layer on top of the rental ordinances is to make sure that we can enforce what was already there. And I think that that's, it's unnecessary. I mean, if we, if we have ordinances in place, we should enforce those. And there's going to be properties, rental properties, that will have to pave simply because it was required when they, when they bought that property. But to now add on this requirement when they didn't expect it, it's a much greater expense than any other kind of, like a maintenance issue they might have for your house. This is, is more significant than, than they may have, have accounted for in their business plan. So all those reasons to say, I, I believe that the, the ordinance as it stands now is fatally flawed. I do believe that we need to have aspects in there. If gravel is, is decrepit, and I know one house in Cedar Falls that I just reported on Friday, huge craters. It looks like the moon on their, their driveway. And it rained the other day, water puddled all over, cars are parked sideways. Yes, that's a bad thing and we, we can put in or, or just enforce ordinances to make sure that doesn't happen. But to, to have a broad brush, something that particularly is affecting the College Hill neighborhood and in downtown, and apply it to so many other areas like in Cedar Heights and North Cedar, where it's just, it's not a problem. I think again is that, that hatchet where we should be using a scalpel. And so I believe we should, we should vote this down and, and create an ordinance that actually addresses the problems. Thank you. Sorry for the extra time.
Nope, thank you. Sorry about that. Anything further from council? There's a motion and a second on the table to keep the ordinance as is. I will ask all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Can I please see the nays? Just so I'm confirming. It does pass four to three. Moving on to the next item, is there a motion to approve just the bills this time? So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. With council's permission, we'll start the regular city council meeting in 10 minutes and just come back at that time. Thank you.